I would like to reopen the Village of Bronxville's Board of Trustees meeting for June 9, 2025, and ask all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone here. This is, I have to say, this is our trustees' favorite meeting of the year when we get to swear in and honor our policemen and women because we think we have the best department anywhere. We are missing one trustee who's traveling, William Fredericks, and he just wanted to make sure people knew how much he missed being here tonight because he also was such a supporter of our police department, and I promised I would share that message. And just thanks, it's wonderful to see family. Boy, do you guys look good, and ladies look pretty spiffy tonight. Boy, did you up our game tonight. Thank you. It's an honor to have you all here. And I think, Chief, I should turn it over to Chief Sacrialli.
Do you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
We did.
Awesome. We did.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees, I'm Mr. Stow. Yes, this is our favorite evening. Well, we usually gather here in May to commemorate Police Week, scheduling conflict in the PD did not permit us upcoming May, so we're here in June to swear in our three newest officers that we hired and to present awards to those officers that have performed exceptional duty in the county year 2024. Prior to recognizing and swearing in our officers, we also like to recognize officers who have retired from our police department. And with us this evening, we have Police Officer Paul Casalino. Please stand. Now, I've been asked to speak quickly. This is Paul Boyan Jesse, who is a Sergeant in the Hastings Police Department, has the appointment at the hospital to deliver a baby girl. We don't want to have to do that here. Paul began his career with the Steem Albert Police Department in 2007. He then made the wise choice of transferring to the Village of Bronxville Police Department in 2009, and he served with honor, distinction, and integrity until unfortunately in December of 2023, he sustained severe injuries as a result of a fall in a police yard by a black ice storm. Paul fought very hard since December of 2023 to return to duty. Unfortunately, his injuries were too severe to allow him to perform those duties any longer. Paul was a valued member of the police department. He was well-known in the village, regularly attending St. Joseph's Church on Sundays and interacting with residents and merchants. He was the first member of our community policing program. He's here tonight with again his wife, daughter, mother, and father, and we miss Paul. We celebrate his years of service today. He remains a friend to the department, to the village, and unfortunately, his career did end shorter than we all wanted to. But Paul, thank you for your years of service, and we wish you luck in the birth of your second child. You really wanted to say something, but Paul, you know what I'm talking about.
Paul, you were one terrific officer. You really were. Thank you.
Mayor, we will quickly move on to our swearing-in ceremony, and the board, acting as their role of Police Commissioners, will handle swearing-in. First Officer Paul up will be Police Officer Paul Casalino. Paul, if you want to step on. I will ask Trustee Helen Knapp to go swear-in. Paul is here tonight with his mom, his dad, his sister Samantha, and his fiance. Just a note, Paul graduated the New York City Police Academy on December 30 of 2023. His first duty was New York City, Times Square. He was viciously attacked by a terrorist with a machete, fractured his skull, and injured two other officers that were on that Times Square detail. Paul, many officers would not return from that level of violence, especially in their first day. Paul, for our turnover during the duty, continued his probationary period and time in the New York City Police Department, and then as the other Paul, he made the smart choice to transfer to the Bronxville Police Department, and we're honored to have him here. Trustee Knapp, Commissioner Knapp, would you swear in? Please, Officer Paul.
Yes. Okay. Please, after me. I am Paul Casalino.
I am Paul Casalino.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer
The duties of the office of police officer.
for the Bronxville Police Department, according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Mayor, for those residents that may be watching this five-degree show, these officers have been hired in the previous months or year and completed their field training and have been working throughout the village. This is a ceremonious occasion for them to be sworn in. They're not brand-new officers. They've established that they're comfortable here, staying here, and completed a rigorous field training program, and we have this ceremony every man. So, Paul, you've been here a while, you've done an outstanding job, and we look forward to you continuing your career with the Bronxville.
I want to add a few words that you tend to have to provide, so with a combination you've already mentioned about the recitation of breakthroughs of early careers. Officer Casalino, who wrote in Austin, and currently resides at Carmel, fiance Diana. Officer Casalino graduated the Mercy College with a Bachelor of Science degree in corporate and homeland security, and a Master of Science degree in organizational leadership. As Chief mentioned, began his law enforcement career with the New York City Police Department in July 2022, and transferred to us in November 2024. A former college baseball player and avid sports fan, who also loves dogs here, and is already making a strong contribution to our community and police department. So, thank you again.
Yeah.
Chief, could we have Paul introduce his fiancee, please?
Absolutely.
That would be...
Paul's family can stand up, please.
Yes.
Yeah. We'd love to see you later.
Police Officer Samantha Peany. And Commissioner Barron will handle swearing-in. Samantha Peany joined us from the New York City Police Department. We were very fortunate to have her choose the Village of Bronxville. Samantha was actively involved in the New York City Public School System, so involved that she started a program and was able to arrange for scholarships for juniors and seniors of New York City high schools to take bus trips to state universities of New York and encourage them to seek higher education and attend colleges and universities within the state of New York. That program was very successful, and her work within the schools was recognized as well. She's bilingual and a valued member of our police department. Commissioner Barron's?
Thank you. And we also, Samantha Peany, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
Please.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer
Please.
of the Bronxville Police Department, according to the best of my abilities.
Please.
Thank you. I would like to say quick words, and then also, our question. Officer Peany grew up in Brooklyn and currently resides now in Manhattan with her husband, Vladimir. Graduated from John Day College with a Bachelor of Arts in International Criminal Justice. She began in law enforcement with New York City, entered in October 2018, and transferred to the Bronxville Police Department in January 2025. In the opposite grade span, I suspect, with a youth that she pointed out, and she's really a great contributor as well. We are honored to go live down there, and we saw some orientations she can pack around the town, and looking forward to the New York City. She's going to be pinned tonight by her husband, who's also a police officer in the Mamaronek.
Vladimir recently joined the Mamaronek Police Department from the New York City Police Department. We won't hold that against you for not coming to Bronxville.
Chief, could I ask, Officer Peany, do you have any other members of your family in attendance?
Yes, my mother and my in-laws come here.
Yeah.
I just, during our interview some months ago, was just struck by the role, Sam mentioned the role you have played in her life growing up, and she said she was driven by trying to make you proud. And that just, that really struck a note with me, so, great job.
Yeah.
Police Officer Sydney Newberry, please step forward. Commissioner Underhill. Police Officer Sydney Newberry joined us from the New York City Police Department as well. While in the NYPD, she was a member of NYPD's Elite Critical Response Group, and her training within that group and experience has proven invaluable here. For some reason, she has been involved in several critical incidents already here in Bronxville, and her response to those incidents and the reviews from her supervision about her supervisors about those responses was all that she performed above expectations. So, we're very pleased and very happy to have Sydney as part of our family. Commissioner?
I'd really have to change up the order a little bit. My chief, Commissioner Knapp, but Police Officer Sydney Newberry grew up in Nyad, currently resides in Valley Cottage Cottage, which is near Nyad. She graduated from the University of Albany with a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice and psychology. She began a long course of career with NYPD in November 2020, then transferred to Bronxville in January 2025. We had the great opportunity to interview at the same time as Officer Peany, so that was remarkable for us. And then, Deputy Officer Newberry, she'll manage to bother.
We got a client, huh?
I didn't.
Yeah, go to it, somebody.
Because retired Bishop of South Nyad, brand-new Police Department, Brett Newberry. So, during our interview, I asked, who's your role model in life? And she said, that's easy, just like that. And so, anyway, congratulations, and having a spectacular car. I think you did your... I think you did your... Okay. Police Officer Sydney Newberry, I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office of police officer
the duties of the office of police officer
with the Bronxville Police Department
with the Bronxville Police Department
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities.
Traditionally, the most difficult part of this evening is the pinning of the badge, to try and get it in the slot. So, those three officers made it very easy for their relatives to do the pinning. Mayor, that concludes our swearing-in ceremony. I will turn the microphone over to Lieutenant Nicholas DeYoung to present awards, and you will hear acts of bravery, you will hear acts of excellent police work, and I am immensely proud of the team that we have assembled here at the Bronxville Police Department, the finest police department in my mind in Westchester County. They respond to work day in and day out, weekends and holidays, and continue to protect the interests and safety of our residents, our visitors, our merchants, and none of this would be possible without the support from you, Mayor, and every single trustee up there, including Bill Fredericks. You have supported my budgets year after year. You have listened when we ask for more staffing and more equipment, and under the direction of Jim Palmer, this board has been extremely supportive of every single law enforcement request and every single law enforcement effort that we've put forward. And it would not be possible to put on an evening like this without the support of the governing body. So, we, the police department, thank you for your unwavering support of this PD. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Board. Yeah, best part of the night, going to present our law enforcement officer awards for the past year. Sergeant Jeros is going to assist me. First up, we have Officer Nigel Butler and Detective Justin Sokol. Come on up. Okay, this is a lifesaving award, and I was actually present on this call and witnessed these two officers save a life, and it was actually a great job on everyone's behalf. On December 24, 2024, Officer Butler and Detective Sokol responded to a call for an unresponsive male down in the roadway on Craft Avenue. Officers arrived on scene and assessed the male. They quickly determined that immediate lifesaving measures were necessary. Working together, officers connected and attached the automated external defibrillator, performed chest compressions, and administered oxygen. The male began to breathe again on his own. Medical personnel arrived on scene and took over. The male was transported to the hospital, where it was later found out that he had suffered a heart attack and a stroke, which led to his fall. It is due to the quick action of both officers that the male is alive today. Officer Butler and Detective Sokol are being presented with a lifesaving award.
On 8/27/2024, a call was received from a homeowner to report a male had just taken multiple packages from their porch. A description of the male suspect was provided to responding officers. While officers were canvassing for the suspect, a call was received from a second homeowner stating a male fitting the same description had also taken packages from their porch. Officer Donzo Farid canvassed the area and surrounding jurisdiction, locating the male suspect nearly a mile outside of the village. He took immediate action, detained the suspect on his own, and recovered several pieces of stolen property. Officer Donzo Farid displayed a relentless search for the suspect, and for his efforts, he is presented with an Excellent Police Duty Award.
All right, next up, we have Sergeant Cheryl Jeros. Step forward. In December 2023, a call was received of an interrupted burglary at an apartment complex. The male suspect that was identified ran out of the apartment in the building and into a vehicle fleeing the area. In January of 2024, we received a report of a second interrupted burglary in the same apartment complex, the same male and vehicle fitting the same description as the previous incident. Detective Jeros, who was a detective at the time, performed a thorough investigation which revealed the suspect had made entry into another apartment, into other apartment areas of buildings in the area. She worked diligently, collaborating with multiple agencies, making sure to build a strong case. She identified the suspect's vehicle, tracked GPS coordinates, placing the suspect at the burglary scenes, reviewed countless hours of video surveillance, and traced the suspect's cell phone records, and ultimately was able to positively identify and charge the suspect. For her extensive investigation and effort, Sergeant Jeros is being presented with the Excellent Police
Oh, come on. Were you on the mission?
In February of 2024, a report was received for a burglary of a commercial business that occurred overnight. Multiple structures belonging to the business had been entered, and several items had been stolen. Detective Jeros, at the time, reviewed video from the incident location, village cameras, and surrounding businesses. She processed the scene, locating a can that a male suspect had drank from, and she secured it as evidence. Further investigation conducted by Detective Jeros resulted in the identification of the suspect. A warrant was issued, and the suspect was arrested and charged within days of the burglary. Forensic analysis returned with a positive match to the suspect on the evidence collected from the scene. For the quick discovery of the suspect and resolution of the burglary case, Sergeant Jeros is being presented with an Excellent Police Duty Award. Cheryl, you can step aside, let somebody else. Officer Brandon Serrano?
On October 16, 2024, Officer Serrano performed a vehicle stop for an operator failing to use a turn signal. A temporary out-of-state license plate was affixed to the vehicle. Officer Serrano examined the temporary registration and had suspicion that it was fraudulent. An inquiry of the plate revealed the operator had altered the temporary registration, and the vehicle had been reported stolen months earlier. The operator was arrested and charged with possession of stolen property and the possession of a forged instrument. Officer Serrano has received extensive training in identifying modifications made to stolen vehicles and fraudulent license plates. Officer Serrano used his training, experience, and intuition during this vehicle stop, ultimately arresting the defendant and returning the vehicle to its true owner. Officer Serrano is being presented with the Excellent Police Duty Award.
For our last award of the evening, Officer Anthony Franchiati, Officer Jason Cooper, and Officer Matthew Stein. Anthony Franchiati is going to stand in. Officer Stein is out with a newborn baby. The Bronxville, okay, the Bronxville Police Department received several reports of stolen mail from the U.S. Postal Service mailboxes being tampered with within the village and surrounding jurisdiction. No vehicle or suspect description were known at the time of the reports. On November 3, 2024, a report was received that a mailbox, which was in the view of the village camera, had been tampered with. The video revealed a minivan related to the crime. After extensive review of the video, no license plate was able to be obtained. Officer Stein recognized the minivan as the same vehicle being operated the previous week by a defendant he had rested for driving with a suspended license. Officer Stein was able to provide a license plate for the vehicle and pedigree of the operator. In an effort to combat the recent crime pattern, Officer Franchiati surveyed several mailboxes within the village. On November 5, 2024, at 2:40 in the morning, he observed a vehicle matching the description of the suspect stopped near a mail... exited the passenger side and approached the mailbox in an attempt to steal mail. Officer Franchiati immediately relayed the information to headquarters, receiving assistance from Officer Cooper and officers of the Tocco Police Department. The operator and the two passengers were identified, one of them being the driver from the Officer Stein's previous stop. Several pieces of stolen mail were recovered from the console. Charges of criminal possession of stolen property were filed against all three suspects. For the excellent teamwork, the identification, and apprehension of the suspects, Officer Franchiati, Officer Cooper, and Officer Stein are presented with Excellent Police Duty Award.
Just a few notes, Mayor, for those that aren't in our profession. Many people will view Sergeant Jeros and hearing her awards being presented as detective and think she was demoted. A lot of people think detective is a higher rank than sergeant. After her brief work in the detective division, she was promoted to the rank of patrol sergeant and as a supervisor, a valued supervisor within the department. Officer Cooper's working midnights and hopefully sleeping right now to rest up for his tour, will present his award when he returns to duty.
With us this evening at the door is Martin Dantini.
Officer Dantini is the president of the Bronxville PBA, and this will not function unless there is a cohesive relationship between management and the union, and Martin is a big part of that relationship. We have open lines of communication, and this place functions well because of his leadership of the Bronxville PBA. So, thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
That concludes our ceremony for the evening. Family members that are here in attendance, we can do photographs outside. I know the board has some business to attend to, but unless you have questions or comments...
Can we have the officers line up here in front of us so we can get a picture of everybody who's here?
Absolutely. Can we get everybody in front of us?
And I want to thank our photographer, who is actually a wonderful... talk about the Bronxville family. Christina Batista is an administrator, actually, in the planning board, and took her free time to come tonight, so...
That's a great thing.
Thank you, Christina. Righty, we will go back to our regular business, even though that is the most wonderful part of our job, is to be at a meeting like tonight. Mayor's report, this was probably one of the busiest months I've ever had. I've just, probably I'm not going to do everything sequentially, but of course Memorial Day, huge success, starting with a beautiful ceremony at the Bronxville School honoring the veterans. The students talked, were beyond eloquent. Then we moved right into, the chief and I got to be judges at a bake sale and a dog show, and we had great fun. And then, of course, we had the incredible Dr. Yunus as our grand marshal. And everyone commented this year that the parade just had all that great old-fashioned energy, the kids were back on their bikes, all decorated, that, and...
Second graders.
Yeah, and a lot of it goes to Jim and Mary Ann down here, who added pipe bands, entertainment. It's just the parade really was special this year, and a lot of people noticed it, so thank you both, thank you. We had a, most of us went each other, some of us went to the Eastchester commemorative ceremony up at Eastchester High School, and then marched in the Eastchester, their Memorial Day Parade. We had just other events, the sidewalk sale by the Chamber of Commerce was a really good success this year, as the merchants told me. And just this past week, the Chamber also sponsored a wellness event at our movie theater, which has become such a great partner to us, and it was all sorts of businesses that provide some sort of level of human wellness, care, doctors, exercise, acupuncture, you name it. It was, it was really terrific. Then the other night, our superintendent, Dr. Rachel Kelly, had, sponsored by the school, our Board of Trustees, the Police Department, the PTA, a little recognition of her thirtieth year at the Bronxville School. Then Mr. Palmer and I went to a beautiful ceremony dedicating the new dogwood trees that the village partnered financially with our working gardeners organization, and it was honoring, if you can believe it, the hundredth anniversary of that garden club. Then we had the Bronxville Beautification Committee had their fundraiser this past Saturday, and Trustee Napp and I spoke at that, and it seemed like a huge success, and such thanks to the B.C. family for hosting it the second year in a row. Our Gramerton Village had a sold-out event honoring eleven young high school students at the Bronxville School who volunteer to work at Gramerton Village, be it tech support. They started a book club with some of our seniors, just going, reading newspapers, just helping our seniors out, and they were honored by Gramerton Village. And I have to say, it was really, really special. Mr. Palmer and Mary Ann helped orchestrate the senior class safety day, which they now come to Village Hall, and I think they go to five different stations, meaning they go to folks from the fire department, the ambulance corps, the PD, just things that might, sort of real-life scenarios that might happen to them when they get to college, and how to handle things. And the students were incredible, and the school was very pleased with the day. And I think last Sunday, the Bronxville Historical Conservancy had a Hilltop Historic Tour, which again, I heard was sold out. I was not here, but a really nice event on a beautiful day. And upcoming is a car show and music, again sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce, on Parkway Road, June twelfth, from six to nine. So I think that, again, it was a very busy month, but every single thing was celebratory, commemorative, and quite joyous. Oh, I did forget, one event I went to, the Howley Color Run over at the school, which I learned is from a Hindu tradition, and it's a run that celebrates spring and happiness, and they had over a hundred and twenty, mostly young students at the Bronxville School Run, and it was, it was just quite lovely, and they had a nice morning for it, so that was a PTA-sponsored event. And I think, oh, and our senior citizen, I got to pick the raffle prizes. Our seniors had a very successful raffle. Instead of a parking space this year, they garnered all sorts of lovely gifts, of dinners, and goods, again, from our incredibly generous merchants, and they were quite successful and quite happy with the results of going back to a traditional raffle. And honestly, I'll stop there, I think that's, yeah, it was, it was very busy. Anyway, trustees, anything else that happened that you were involved in, or I'm forgetting, or?
Yeah, remember, on May twenty first, the fourth grade class organized a litter pickup that you and I participated in and assisted, and there was, despite the rain, I think it was really well attended, there was a fourth grader who came to the mayor months ago to want to organize this, Liz Collier Color, and her teacher got the fourth grade class involved, and they all picked up litter from the Bronxville School on Palmfield down into the business district, and there was lots, you know, the good news is there wasn't too much garbage, because the village is relatively clean, but the, you know, but they, but they were able to pick up plastics, cigarette butts, you know, things that don't disintegrate, and that should not be thrown out in the streets. And they kind of competed with each other to pick up garbage, and did a very nice job, and they really enjoyed it and wanted to make it an annual event.
And they reached out to me saying they want it to be a yearly event, so I think that would be terrific, and boy, did they work hard, they really did.
But it was also just a reminder on a separate topic, which is cigarette butts do not disintegrate. They stay on the streets and in the sidewalks, and there were lots of them, and it is really a, it is a very, very tough habit to, I mean, to have to pick up cigarette butts after folks that discard them, it's, that's a tough one, especially for fourth graders. They were really shocked at how many there were.
It was a real eye-opener.
Yeah, a real eye-opener.
Yeah, unfortunately. Trustees, anyone else?
Did you mention the Take Back Day?
No, see, this is...
Okay, so we had, in addition to all of the things we already discussed, we had the Green Committee organized a very successful Take Back Day that they do every year, electronics, and then other goods behind Village Hall, so I think it's just, it's a great opportunity for people to recycle and reuse their goods, so really successful.
Yeah, and the shredding as well.
Yeah.
It was jammed.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
It's always jammed, you know, it's incredible, and I, you know, the amount of books that are going back into the bins for donations of the used books, so people are very generous with giving their, the things that they don't use anymore.
Mary Ann and I were back there that morning, and there was a lot of people dropping things off by cars. A lot of people take it very seriously.
Yeah, yeah, no, they, they line up down Midland Avenue for the shredder, an hour before the shredder, we're always amazed, but, and that, you're right, thanks to the Green Committee, thanks for, anything else?
I just think that we, I wanted to mention that, I think Jim Palmer and the rest of the team, the hardscape improvements to the east side downtown, the west side downtown in terms of slowing traffic down and making the traffic patterns more visible, and then combined with the work that the Bronxville Beautification Committee have done, the village has not looked so good in a really long time, so it's, I'm very proud of that and thankful for it. Thank you.
And we receive a lot of compliments that should be directed to you and our DPW staff, who works so well with our three different garden groups, and they forged a really nice friendship, which is a nice side effect of all of this, so it was a win-win on every level. And with that, I will turn it to Mr. Palmer and the administrators' report.
All right, thank you for that, and just segueing on the, yeah, on the downtown improvements, I gotta say, you know, the DPW has been firing on all cylinders with, and, you know, you transition from one season to another, but we have a really terrific team with the, with the DPW, we've had some wonderful new hires, and then, of course, with the summer help that we have, some of our fellows that have returned again, Albert Van Ness, the Kelty Boys, really hard workers, and we absolutely appreciate it, but, you know, special thanks to the DPW. But for the downtown improvements, and I must say, the BBC and the working gardeners, I just have such admiration for those workers, because they really are the doers, you know, as they say, very touching. And on that note, we are still planning on doing, working with them and their vendor, Gaddy Farms, to add additional plantings in the median as you come up on the underpass. That, that grass was really not there, meant to, meant to be as grass, we're just waiting for irrigation to be put in there, and then at the bump out by the Soccer Store and the bump out by Griffin Coogan on the east side, those will, once the irrigation is put in, we will work with the BBC to lay out additional planting beds. They have wonderful designs that they worked on, and likewise, the same is true on the west side, on the median, as you approach, it looks like poor grass right now, but it's because it's going to be, the irrigation will be put in, and additional flowers, so it's gonna, it'll look even better. And then I am working with the BBC to deal with the embankments, and we have some ideas, and we want to actually reach out to the community on that, we're gonna, Thomas is gonna help me, we're gonna pick up some dimensions, the BBC is working on some specifications for some ideas, terraces, and how we can replace that, come up with a better landscaping on all those hillsides, because Mayor, as you've noted over and over again, and one of your pet peeves, there is a lot of weeding, it's really labor-intensive for the DPW, and the ivy just hasn't taken as well as everyone thought it would, so we're working on some designs, then we're gonna put those out to landscapers to come up with some proposals, and we're gonna want to get some feedback from the public, because there's some unique ideas out there, so, still work.
Can I just interject on the same subject? I forgot to say, the BBC is looking for sponsors of the planters throughout the business district, and you can reach out to the BBC on the web, and they will put a nice BBC sign with your name as donating a planter. Your sweet mother used to always donate a planter, so if folks, they still need some of us to, to help them out to fill all our planters, thanks, sorry, Jim, but...
No, no, you're right, and if you can't reach the BBC, you can, you can send an email to me indicating that you'd be desirous of sponsoring a planter, and I'll put you in touch with, with their representatives. They have had a lot of those in the downtown as well, and they really help spruce up the area. Just also want to follow up, Mayor, you mentioned the first summer concert coming up, I'll put a plug in for the Chamber of Commerce, they do have a nice calendar of all the summer, upcoming summer concerts, and those are also available on their website, and of course, for those residents or members of the community that have not signed up for the newsletter, please do so on the website, it continues to evolve. Thomas has been working very hard on that, keeping it very mobile-friendly, so everyone can scroll down through all those, through those events.
And Trustee Barron's.
And she is like an, she is like an eagle eye, Trustee Barron's, with reviewing that, and Helen as well, especially on such short notice, thank you, thank you all for doing that. Just also a reminder, the county's mobile passport van, we always have that every June, they're coming next Tuesday on the seventeenth, and you can get a variety of services there, including getting your passport updated. This is something that's much more user-friendly than having to go to the county clerk's office in White Plains. Again, these are also items that are in our newsletters, so we do ask that everyone sign up for those.
Can we get somebody from the Real ID folks, from the DMV, to come by?
Mobile DMV, yikes, now we're, you know, Thomas, let's, let's try to work on that.
A little, oh, yeah, yeah.
Also, just a reminder that the twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax bills have been mailed, that first payment, once again, is payable by June thirtieth. We encourage everyone to pay online. We now have that mechanism set up, there's several different options cover that. Also, Village Hall will be closed in observance of the Fourth of July, that's, that's a Friday this year. And a couple, a couple updates, just for the public's edification, there's been some confusion of the Iona's application for improvements to their baseball field on the other side of Route twenty-two from their main campus. Just so everyone's edification, their, Iona's team is appearing before the planning board this Wednesday at six thirty for the first time, for the planning board to review their application, announce that the planning board has received an application. It is not for approval of the application, there are going to be many steps in that process. The Iona's team has already responded to several comments from our consulting engineers and planners, but again, this is the first step, their first appearance before the planning board, and what may happen at this upcoming meeting on Wednesday is for the planning board members to take a vote to identify themselves as the lead agency under the state's Environmental Quality Review Act, in which case, if they do that, then there's a whole process with that, and a notice would be sent out to all the other interested parties, like the town of Eastchester, the Village of Tocco, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. So it's not a public hearing, it's not to make a decision on the, on the application, but rather to announce it, share the details of it, and hopefully Iona's team will go through a cursory view of the application, since there is a lot of miscommunication, perhaps misunderstanding of what they intend to, to do with the baseball field and the extent of the improvements. So all that information is on the village website, under the planning board's page, so all the correspondence received, for that matter, many residents, many non-residents have already communicated their concerns, those will be made an official part of the record, and as those have been sent to me as the village clerk, I have forwarded those to the planning board secretary, who in turn has sent it off to the planning board, so just wanted to clarify that. The deputy mayor reminded me that we are in the period of the ban of the use of the gas-powered leaf blowers, that commenced on May fifteenth and continues through October fifteenth. So again, for the next several months, only electric leaf blowers. We do have a requirement that all landscapers, landscaping companies be licensed by the Village of Bronxville. Village of Bronxville. Those permits are available through, also through the Village website. So please make sure that your landscaper is licensed. My office and Thomas will make an effort to go out and inspect some of these companies that are working in the village. To the general public, you can send an email to me anonymously to my office if you receive or if you feel that someone's using a gas-powered blower and we will investigate it. We don't give that information out. We're not looking to put neighbor against neighbor, but it will help us to follow through with that landscaping company and threaten the revocation of their permit. Just wanted to mention that. Update, Hamilton and Sussex improvements. Most of those catch basins and manholes have now, are now in. Appreciate everyone's patience there. There's one additional catch basin going in at the end of Hamilton, at the intersection with Sherman. I was emailed that owner today. And two additional manholes. Otherwise, those improvements are in and we will be following some of the storm events very carefully. We believe those will have a really significant benefit. The Crawford Drainage Improvement Project, as the Board knows, this has been an ongoing plan design. The plans are now out to bid. We're finalizing landscape designs and I will be meeting with some representatives of the working gardeners to take them through the landscaping designs to date. They've already provided us some very useful input. We appreciate that. And we've also been working with the Town of Eastchester on that. And as you know, we've submitted an application for funding, funding up to 50% through the county's stormwater law on that project. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. It was a busy month for all of us. My heavens.
Jim, have you had a not-busy month?
No. Not even, and there's, yeah, awful lot to do. And we're not getting into all the projects that are currently out to bid. Anyone who's interested can call us. But of course, we have the solar panel project, which is currently out to bid. And those bids are due back at the end of this week to hopefully get that project underway. We're really excited. So lots going on.
Yes. And thank you. And thank you, Mary Ann, for our minutes, which I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session, the work session, and our regular meeting of May 12th. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes passed. Thank you. And Jim, do you want?
Mary Ann, for the revisions.
And Jim, do you wanna start with our boiler conversion?
Sure. In the context of the Capitol Projects, last month you approved the, awarded the boiler replacement for the library. That's gonna get underway shortly. We're now working on the Village Hall boilers. So this, we had, following a rebid, we had one contractor bid ICM Mechanical Contractors for $82,850. I will say that is less than a previous proposal that we received from another contractor. And Thomas reached out to other communities in Westchester that have used ICM Mechanical Contractors and those communities are very much satisfied. So yes, requesting that you authorize the replacement, the conversion of the Village Hall boiler from oil to natural gas be awarded to ICM Mechanical Contractors for $82,850. And we are using either a signed fund balance that you had previously set aside for Capitol Projects or future debt service. I just, I want to review that with you at a later date when we close out this fiscal year's budget so we can, but I think we'll likely, the Treasurer and I will likely recommend that we use it from the assigned fund balance that you had authorized previously for our Capitol Projects.
Oh, right.
I'll move it.
Jim, can I just ask, the library boiler was much more expensive, right? What's the?
That's, exactly. This one is, this one is a conversion. The boiler still has some useful life, but we're converting it. And then we have to run a gas line from the main line out in the street to the building. The library's replacement of the entire infrastructure and some of the attachments to it.
So there's no, there's no gas line from, from a pond field into the.
Right. We need a whole new line.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And where will, where will that go? Underneath the grass? Will you dig up the grass?
It's gonna have to dig up the grass and come very close to the corner of this area here. Underneath this floor is actually a crawl space. We'll be tapping right into the brick, bring it into the crawl space here, into our boiler room.
Will that help? I know the Green Committee is very pleased that we're doing this. Will that, will that help in any of our green efforts, you know, our?
You know, I forget if it's going to help us towards our silver status, but it absolutely is environmentally much friendlier than the oil for sure. Probably the most friendly would have been the blowers, the electric blowers, but it's just, it's just impractical for this building based on all the analysis. But yes, I don't know if it'll, if we get credit for those points. Thomas is now researching it. But the Green Committee is well aware of it. It's definitely a plus and lower carbon footprint, et cetera, et cetera.
Perfect.
I'll move it.
Okay. Will you move it?
I'll move it.
All right.
I moved it.
All right.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Yeah. I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Motion passes. I just wanted to say, we mentioned Thomas, and Thomas is the wonderful Thomas Morzello, who is our Assistant Village Administrator to Jim Palmer and has really stepped in. And Jim's job is instead of three times as much as he's doing, I think it's only twice as much. So we want everyone to get to know Thomas. So, thank you.
Month three or month four?
Two.
What, month, you've been here for two months?
Just the start and third month.
Third month, okay.
Okay. Your third month. And you, third board meeting, third month. Well.
This month will be an expert for sure.
Yes, yeah. Thank you for all you do. All righty. The next is the Police Department. We got a nice briefing on a new records management system. And Jim, do you wanna just give a little thumbnail sketch on that?
So, yes, we had met with the Lieutenant and he explained this system at our, at the last work session. And this is, you'll be approving the purchase of just under $200,000, a new entire database system, records management system for the PD, which is the backbone of the PD, if you will. All the calls that go into the PD, all those blotter entries, all go into this system. And it's a significant upgrade from where we are currently at and also something that we need to do because the existing system is no longer being serviced. So thank you to the Lieutenant and the Police Chief for doing a thorough review on this and getting the Motorola group to reduce their price considerably over the course of the past six months. So the grand act, we are putting in this resolution with the purchase that you once again authorize either debt service or unassigned fund balance. And of course, as Lieutenant mentioned, there is an application that was submitted by the Town of Carmel on behalf of a small consortium, which we are a part of, which would fund $200,000. But that application is still pending. But we really need to get this system implemented because as you know, with the software, it's gonna take probably six months before this actually gets implemented because there's a lot of data that has to get converted. But I am more than satisfied that this system is a must and that the Motorola Solutions Flex RMS system is the best, since especially our mutual aid partners are also going with that system.
All righty. Then do I have a motion?
What we were struck at at the work session was the amount of due diligence that the Lieutenant and the Police Chief and his group put into researching which one they were gonna use. I mean, this is a very big decision for them.
Good point.
It's long overdue. In fact, you know, 33 years and they're not, you know, they're not getting any more upgrade support on it. I mean, it has to be done, but they didn't rush into a decision. They really took their time to figure out which one they wanted. And it wasn't necessarily, you know, the majority of the people don't, some people don't use the system. This is a, you know, used by most people, but not by everybody. There were other systems out there, but this was a system that they thought really fit all their needs the best after extensive research.
And the requirements, oh, thank you for saying that. But in the requirement, it's really important to know that the state has imposed dramatically stricter and more burdensome requirements on document retention and delivery over the last five years. So when you think about what was put in place for three, three years ago, or even six, seven, eight years ago, the demands are much, much higher today.
Mary, good, well said. All right. Would one of you like to move this?
I'll move it.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next.
Jim, I do have one question. So there's the, for the first five or eight years, there's an annual.
$25,000.
$25,000 a year. Is there a, is there a fee and that we were, a subscription fee that we've been paying on an annual basis in prior years for the existing system?
There was, I believe, and I think it's, if we stop paying it because they're not supporting.
Right. We have not, right. We have not been, we have not been paying it for years because there wasn't any support. I think some committees did not realize they were, some of the other committees were paying subscription fees but not getting anything. So yes, there was a fee. We weren't paying it because there wasn't anything. But this, that annual fee will be baked into our budgets going forward.
So it is, it is an incremental step up of 25 to our budget.
Yes.
But I guess what we're saying here is that this is not discretionary.
Exactly.
It's not discretionary.
Right. All right. Now we have a.
The next item is just housekeeping, just once again approving the use of the recycling app that we have been using for the past several years as part of a smaller consortium of eight or nine communities. This is, our share of that is approximately $3,000. And Tarrytown takes the lead on the process, so it's the same IME that you've been authorizing. And this is just to be able to collect our monies for the 24, 25 year using the recycling app. And this is again, a green initiative. It was funded through a DEC grant. Now we're using the county's recycling app that they've since built out.
Oh, right. I will move that. And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And thank you to Tarrytown for leading this for us.
A lot of good villages and towns are in this as well.
Yeah.
Next item, also just housekeeping. We're just recognizing that we're going to be closed to the public on Friday, August 1st of this year, so what we call Records Management Day. And staff are here and it's when we essentially preserve and archive and dispose of our, all our municipal records in conjunction with the state's records retention and disposition schedule. And it only works when we're closed to the public on that day. We really, and of course, I'll be working on trying to reorganize what's on my desk. Retool what's on my desk, Mary Ann.
I was thinking the same.
So gently reminds me.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you might need more than a day.
Actually, yeah. I'll be having Records Management Month.
Yeah.
He's hiding behind his files.
Knowing that we need this, I will move it and.
I'll second, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And the next, the next item is the completion of the Justice Court audit. Unfortunately, our Treasurer, whom you know never misses a meeting, is feeling, was out today a little under the weather, Lori Voss, but she, she is, once again, as she's, as you know, you appointed her as the audit for the Justice Court, which she did, and closed out those records. It was a bit of a transitional year with our new team member, our new court clerk, Shirley, and also working with Yessenia Tovar. But as you can see by the backup documentation, as you know, we have a really, a really busy Justice Court with collecting more than almost $770,000 for the village, most of that being in parking fines and the remaining from moving violations. And $60,000 of that, that's after $60,000 gets returned to the New York State Office of Court Administration. So a very busy Justice Court.
Do you know how that, that number offhand compares to last year?
It's up from, it's up from last year. We're, from the, from the, from the previous year, I should say. And yes, and this is, this actually is closing out the 23, 24 year. So we are one year behind. Part of our goal for this year is to close out the 24, 25 year sooner than later, but it is up and I suspect the 24, 25 year will even be busier because, as you know, the police have been, I hate to say the word aggressively, but consistently enforcing the, the moving violations downtown with crossing the double yellow, the use of the e-bikes without the appropriate insurance and registration and.
Double parking.
And the double parking. So those are those quality of life issues that you've directed them to prioritize their resources and, and it's, yes, and it's been, it's been very busy. But I suspect this year will even be busier now that we did hire a full-time parking enforcement officer. We had a vacancy in that position, but the new fellow, Christopher Rolena, seems to really be, be out there. And again, it's, we have a very complex parking system in the downtown. Yes, there's significant revenue that's generated, but still the principal goal, and of course, in the vehicle and traffic violations, is ensuring safety. Crossing the double yellow line to get into an angle spot on pond field is not safe. And then when it comes to parking enforcement, we're actually trying to help merchants by encouraging the turnover and not having someone park in those spaces all day long. So the PEOs, I always say, are very visible. They're not hiding, but they need to enforce uniformly and that they're doing. But again, it is a very busy court. The two justices are terrific. They both have to have their own separate accounts, so there's actually a lot of financial work that has to be maintained. So I thank the Treasurer and the court staff for that.
And congratulate her on the use of the word "cheated." So that was, that was good.
SAT quality.
Learning something new every day.
Yes. And just an important clarification. People mention a parking enforcement officer is not legally allowed to ticket someone who crosses the double yellow line. That is a vehicle and traffic violation.
A moving violation, right.
And it sounds small, but think of it, if you stop a car crossing the double yellow and heaven forbid, the person has a weapon, the person has a, it's a stolen car, they are not trained or equipped to deal with that. So sometimes people get confused that if they see a PEO who witnesses a double yellow, that officer cannot legally stop them. And the double yellow transgression has to be witnessed by a police officer. A camera picture, a video, none of that is acceptable in New York State. So it is frustrating, but that's, that's the way it works, so.
Did you actually do that resolution the last?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So I just need someone to move our Justice Court audit resolution.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Yeah.
Sorry. Do you have another copy of the actual report? It doesn't, it's not attached to the resolution. It says attached four-page.
Uh, no, I think I just provided the summary. That I sent to you via email. I can say that, that should have been an Excel spreadsheet.
And before we adjourn, I wanted to mention a major thank you to our two state representatives, Senator Shelley Mayer and Assemblywoman Amy Pollan. We had a very kind of unfair situation here where one of our police officers, due to a glitch in the civil service law, was not going to be able to take an exam for a promotion. And it was incredibly critical because this particular exam is given every four years. So this could have really affected the officer's future promotion trajectory. And we reached out to both of them and they work incredibly well together. And honestly, they were tireless in helping us convince the. And honestly, they were tireless in helping us convince the civil service, which is not an easy thing to do. And thanks to their effort, not only our officer, but almost a dozen other officers throughout the county who were caught in this New York City PD transfer issue, are now allowed to take the promotional exam. So I just wanted to thank both of them, because they really worked for us on something that was quite important to the village and a real career effect on one of our officers. So, we are well represented. Anyone, anything else, trustees, that we're missing? Counsel, anything?
Maybe we should wish the graduating class of 2025 congratulations. Their graduation is Saturday.
That's right. 7:00 PM, and everybody, it's outdoors, so everybody can come and stand and watch, and it's pretty special. So, thank you. That's a great way to end tonight's meeting. All right. And do I have a motion to close our meeting?
Same here.
And a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we're back on July...
14th.
14th, July 14th.
Perfect.